Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 26th Board of Education meeting. In accordance with the state sunshine law of New Jersey, adequate notice of this meeting of the Hillsborough Township Board of Education was provided on September 22nd, 2006, to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier-News. Roll call, please.
Ms. Bogushevsky.
Here.
Ms. Sensfanti. Mr. Cohen. Mr. Cooper.
Here.
Mr. Dutt. Mr. Gillette.
Here.
Mrs. Haas.
Here.
Mrs. Haley.
Here.
Mr. Kinst. We have a quorum.
Thank you, sir. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) United States of America, and to the people for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Correspondence is as listed on the agenda, and I'm actually going to turn this over to Dr. Schiff right now.
Thank you, Madam President. It's my pleasure this evening to share some wonderful news from across the district with our board and our community this evening. Six of our own Hillsborough High School seniors were recently announced as semifinalists in the 62nd Annual National Merit Scholarship Program. Congratulations to seniors Caitlin Cirleao, Rebecca Della Croce, Tharin Cariparidi, Joyce Lu, Anan Patel, and Emily Simroth on achieving this prestigious honor. To be named a National Merit semifinalist, students must have an outstanding academic record throughout high school, be endorsed and recommended by a high school official, submit a written essay, and earn qualifying SAT scores that confirms the student's PSAT performance. According to the National Merit Scholarship Program, over 1.6 million juniors across 22,000 high schools entered the 2017 program by taking the 2015 PSATs, which served as the initial screening of entrance. Finalists will be chosen this spring, and 2,500 National Merit Scholarships will be awarded along with 1,000 corporate-sponsored Merit Scholarships. Congratulations to Caitlin, Rebecca, Tharin, Joyce, Anan, and Emily on this honor, and good luck as they move forward in the program. I'm also pleased to announce that this past Saturday, the Hillsborough High School Marching Band competed in the 8th Annual Roxbury Marching Band Classic held at Roxbury High School. The classic is an invitational competition of regional high school marching bands from northern and central New Jersey. Congratulations to HHS Marching Band on their outstanding performance. The band scored 71.7 in their first competition of the season, taking second place overall and top scores of the evening in music ensemble and music effect. Congratulations, all of our Hillsborough High School Marching Bands. That's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Schiff. So, moving on, I'm actually going to move forward to the approval of minutes first. So, can I have a motion to approve the September 12th Executive Session Meeting Minutes?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have any issues or questions? No? Roll call, please, sir.
Ms. Bogushevsky.
Yes.
Ms. Sensfanti. Mr. Cohen. Mr. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Dutt. Mr. Gillette.
Yes.
Mrs. Haas.
Yes.
Mrs. Haley.
Yes.
Mr. Kinst. Motion passes.
Thank you, sir. Can I have a motion to please approve the September 12th Public Regular Meeting Minutes?
So moved.
Okay. Thank you. Any issues, discussions? No? Roll call, please.
Ms. Bogushevsky.
Here. Yes.
Ms. Sensfanti. Mr. Cohen. Mr. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Dutt. Mr. Gillette.
Yes.
Mrs. Haas.
Yes.
Mrs. Haley.
Yes.
Mr. Kinst. Motion passes.
Thank you, sir. On to committee reports. I'm going to start with Mrs. Haas for education, please.
Thank you. That's good. Thank you. The Education Committee met on the morning of September 20th, and we discussed a number of things. One is the 2017-2018 district calendar, and without much ado, we will be starting the calendar on September 5th with two staff days, and then the first day of school for students will be September 7th. We are confirmed for graduation that year on June 19th at 3:00. And spring break will be March 30th, which is Good Friday through April 6th. All willing, but we don't have bad weather all year. And that basically covers Easter and Passover. We, well, that's enough about the calendar. We have approved three more science curriculum matters, anatomy and physiology, transitional primary, and geophysical science. I'm very excited to say that we approved a book for our new American Sign Language class. This textbook goes through the variety of signs that children would have to learn in their first year of signing, and the book is called Signing Naturally. We reviewed a ton of policies, most of which had to be reviewed only for legal citations and references that were updated, and there were a number of them that required a language change due to the law against discrimination. Other than that, most of the changes were minor. We also had a preview of Dr. Ann Tunis' presentation on the 2016 Park results, which she will be presenting at the October 10th, God willing, meeting. And that should be very, very interesting, but we got to see some preliminary figures and ask some questions about that. So, that's it for the Education Committee.
Thank you, Mrs. Haas. I'm actually going to turn it over to Dr. Schiff for the Governance Meeting Report.
Thank you, Madam President. The Governance Committee met on September 19th at 7:30. We had a single agenda item, and that was an update on the strategic plan. The next step in the strategic planning process that I recommended, that the committee discussed and seemed all right with, was to form three different study groups. One that would work in the area of improving student life, a second to focus in on early childhood education, including preschool and exploring full-day kindergarten options, and the third, looking at college and career readiness. So, those three buckets, so to speak, kind of encapsulate all of the input that was received at the various stakeholder committee meetings. These study groups will be meeting periodically throughout the academic year with the idea of presenting a report to the board, each committee separately, that would detail their recommendations, anticipated budget, a review of appropriate research, and a full rationale as well as needs assessment for their recommendation going forward. Then, in the spring, the board, at that point, can make some decisions about which ideas, recommendations, the board wishes to operationalize, and then we would begin with actually implementing some of those ideas, if implementable, quickly in the 17-18 school year, and if they're larger items, as we had discussed, including building referenda or other construction projects shortly thereafter. So, that was basically what we discussed in the Governance Committee meeting on the 19th.
Thank you. And don't go too far, Dr. Schiff. If you could give a report on human resources.
Sure. Very quickly. We discussed various personnel matters, along with Mrs. Haas' explanation of a variety of different policies that were reviewed. Each of the standing committees reviewed over a dozen policies. Human resources hit policies from affirmative action to district mentoring program, all the way out to equal employment opportunity and complaint procedures. All of these were recommended by Strauss ESME, which is our policy service that we utilize. For the most part, they're not substantive changes. They're changes to particular laws and citations. Most of it was just minor language changes. Also, Mr. Volpe did a staffing update, and pleased to say that we're fully staffed. As we opened up the school year, we have a couple of guidance counselor positions that are on the agenda tonight for openings that we anticipate relatively soon, and we discussed class sizes and our staffing matrix.
Thank you very much, Dr. Schiff. Mr. Gillette, operations?
Thank you. Operations Committee met September 21st. We had several items on the agenda. I'll go through a few of them, or most of them, maybe all of them with you. First of all, we had an update on the mold issue at the high school. Remediation is continuing, and most, if maybe by this time, all classrooms are open, or at least most. But this has been a costly process, so you'll see on your agenda tonight, we're going to transfer some funds to help cover this. This is getting up to be approximately $292,000 in remediation for this issue. We are in discussion with our insurance company about how much of that ultimately we will have to, we can recover from the insurance company for that, and we're going to continue to be in discussion with the insurance company over this matter. Next, we went over the RFQ schedule for next year. This is the schedule for the appointment of our professionals, and up this year would be the, for the 2017-18 school year, would be the district architect, municipal advisor, and environmental consultant. We had an update on the ESIP, which is, it's almost, we just have a few punch list items on the ESIP project. This is the energy savings improvement project. Almost done, just a few punch list items, so it's 99.9% complete at this time. I'm happy to report today that the audit for the previous school year is complete, the financial audit, and there were, as usual, no findings. Also, the auditor commended Mr. Mahmood and Mr. Bolden on their excellent work this year, and I concur with that. We also reviewed a number of policies, but these were all just with minor changes. As Mrs. Haas noted, they're citing different aspects of the law within the policy. Laws have changed. They have, citations have to be different. There was one new, to me, policy about drones. So, we took a look at the drone policy, and I guess that's everybody in the world has a drone policy now. Unmanned aircraft drones, they cannot be flown over our schools. So, that was all very normal. We had an update on some of the facilities projects that are going on right now. One of the rooms at the Otten Road Intermediate School is being repurposed for a child study team room, which required some construction. That's going smoothly. As usual, we had some water concerns, rain concerns at some of the buildings. That's being handled. We had a request for cooling at Hillsborough Elementary School Health Office. This is to replace a unit that has gone out of service, and we're going to get that done. We're going to install some window units in the health nurses' office at HES to take care of that. Parking lot at HMS is 99.9% done, probably done by now when I'm giving this report. Same for the turf field. As of Wednesday, it was 99.9% done, probably all done now. Dr. Schiff reported to us his thoughts on cooling. We had some tremendous heat the first couple of days of school this year. Dr. Schiff and his administrative team are looking at solutions for that. One of the solutions he's suggesting at this point, still needs some research on it, is large-scale portable air conditioning units that can be brought in to a large room, for instance, maybe the room we're in now, or the gymnasium at ARRIS, for instance, and cool down the whole room with one gigantic unit. The issue with, as Dr. Schiff reported at the last board meeting, the issue with our schools now is actually it's, we're kind of being, we kind of have some issues because of our success, because so many of our schools have cooling now, it becomes problematic to call for a half-day or to cancel school for heat when, district-wide, when some schools really don't need to be canceled. So, we're looking at some other solutions. Ultimately, the solution is, which we've been working towards for a number of years now, is to have climate-controlled learning environments throughout all of the schools. Let's make no mistake, that is the ultimate goal, to have complete climate-controlled environments for our teachers, staff, and students at all the schools. So, we're hoping to get that. At one school, I'm sorry this is taking so long, but I had so many updates. Sorry, Dana. I know you like me to be brave. She can't hold it in. At Woodford, speaking of school closings, when we have a, in the past, if we've had a power, district-wide power outage in the middle of the day, only one of our schools, that's only a very serious issue at one of our schools, that's Woodford, because without power, the wealth, for the water and the septic, each do not work without power. We have no backup generation power at that school. The other schools, if it was close to dismissal time anyway, could still continue to function during the daytime without power for a limited amount of time, until we get the buses there. Woodford's another story, so we're working on trying to get some, trying to get generator or something at Woodford. I'm looking at Jim as I say this, because he'd probably take an interest in that. So, we're working on that right now, and we should have some news about that maybe by, maybe in a couple of months or by the next meeting. And one last thing. Here's the final item. Marcy Lewis, our supervisor of transportation, gave us a report, as I may have reported to you at a previous board meeting, on August 8th, just about three weeks before the start of school, one of our bus companies told us they would not be able to fulfill their contract. This was a company that has 12 triple routes affecting maybe like 2,400 students. Subsequent to that, they've also now had some other routes in our district, to the Vo-Tech School and other things. They're not going to be able to fulfill those either, but we were able to work very quickly and make arrangements with Montoc Bus, which is another company, to take over those routes. Now, we just have to figure out how actually they can take over the contract, because they can't take over someone else's contract. So, we're going to figure out, they're doing it now on a quote basis, but we haven't awarded them a contract. So, Mr. Mahmood is working on, with the attorneys, to figure out how to actually to, I want to say transfer the contract, because you're not allowed to do that, but in any case, to get them the contract. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. So, we are actually going to move on to comments from the public at this time, so if everyone can just bear with me. We very much welcome and value input from the public. There are two times during board meetings when the public is invited to speak. One time is right now, for any item that is listed on tonight's action agenda for new business. There will be another public forum towards the end of the meeting about any topic. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes that there may be a misunderstanding or an accuracy, the board president or presiding board member or superintendent will address the comment. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring sessions. New Jersey statutes do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. Before you make your comment, please state your name and address and group affiliation as appropriate. Thank you. Do I have any public comment?
Good evening. Sylvia Scizari, 281 Otten Road. I'd like to address Mr. Gillette's, just his plan on the air conditioning, the mobile air conditioning in the gyms. Since I teach in the gym, I was just wondering, you know, I know you're looking for a large space, but what kind of teaching or learning do you think is going to happen when you bring all of us together into our space just to have the kids in a cool area? Because, I mean, first of all, you know, we were here that first week, and we were dying when it was 100 degrees in these schools. Yes, upstairs is well-air-conditioned, but the downstairs, where the kids were, you know, learning and teachers were teaching, were not. I love the plan of AC. I wouldn't, I would love AC in the gyms, don't get me wrong, but if it's just a holding area to get us through the day, I think that that definitely is money not well-spent.
Thank you.
Good evening. Kitty Ward, first grade teacher at Sunnymead and Secretary of the Hillsborough Education Association. I just want, I had a couple of clarifications about agenda items. How many drone incidents have we had? I don't mean to be cheeky, I just, have we had any yet?
Yeah, I'm not aware of any. But this is being recommended by our policy firm. Basically, what we don't want to have happen is outside people surveilling our students or staff.
Sure.
There is, within this policy, if you have a chance to read it, an opportunity for permission to be given for particular educational reasons that we would do it. So, one could imagine that possibly high school physics or other groups may, for educational purposes, want to use a drone, but we do not want outside groups coming in, flying over, and surveilling our buildings.
Sure. And then, how many incidents, just as we're prioritizing, I guess, because there is always so much work to do, when we're prioritizing what policies we should be drafting, how many incidents or concerns have we had regarding heat and temperature? Would we say more than zero?
Absolutely.
So, I guess my point is that we, if we can just consider having a policy in place, and I know it sounds like, Mr. Gillette, thank you, you reported, you are definitely working on some solutions, but it would be great that there would be a clear policy for that. My second question I had is on the strategic planning. I understand there was, the one group has gotten together, and now there'll be a district steering committee? Is that separate then?
Yeah, there'll be three separate work groups that are going to take the work that already occurred within those stakeholder committee groups, and they're going to be breaking out those three areas, those three buckets, as I describe.
Great.
That captures the work that was already done. But now, we have to put the meat to the bones at this point.
So, what is that committee comprised of? Is there teachers, administrators, or is it, how is that comprised?
There's going to be the opportunity for a broad spectrum of stakeholders, including teachers, communities, students, those type of things. Right now, each of the chairs of the committee and I have met a couple of times. Dr. Ann Tunis is going to be chairing the student life. Karen Binger, principal of our high school, is going to be chairing the college and career readiness, and Maryam Alady, one of our elementary principals, is going to be chairing the early childhood. So, they're in the process right now of taking a look at how to invite, how to ask, how to get those voices as part of the process.
Good. Great. I'm hoping that, you know, we do have some teachers, and classroom teachers specifically, that are part of that. I guess the challenge will be, when can we do that? Because we can't pull them out of the classroom, so hopefully, as you're looking at things, you're also looking, is it going to be stipend for those people that would be beneficial to the committee if it were to meet after school? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Amy Salinger. I teach here at Otten Road School, and I am also the ATA treasurer. I've been serving as an officer of the Hillsborough Education Association for a little over three years. When I decided to take on this role, I knew it would mean extra work and time away from my family, but I also knew it was important work involving something I am very passionate about, advocacy. I advocate for my own children, I advocate for my students, and I advocate for my members. This is why you get emails from me about heat and mold. I've worked very hard to make sure all our members know I am there for them. They know they can come to me with questions, concerns, or for advice. I help them navigate when there is an issue, and I also explain when things are not a union issue. I can tell it is working, because over the past year or so, I have seen my colleagues educate themselves and advocate for themselves, and as an officer here to serve them, seeing the support and activism shown here tonight makes me really proud. It is advocacy that brings me to the podium tonight, because when several of my colleagues approached me about an item on the action agenda, I knew what I had to do. So, it is with nothing but respect that I wrote the topic of the superintendent merit goals up for a vote tonight. I will admit that I am not fluent in how merit goals are written and what parameters or policy, if any, need to be followed, but like I said, members came to me, and I am advocating. Goals 1 and 2 have to do with student achievement and common assessments. These common assessments have been developed by teachers, are administered by teachers, and are graded by teachers. So, the question is, why is the work of teachers being used as a merit goal for our superintendent? Goal number four has to do with teacher and principal SGO scores. SGOs are mandated by the State Teach-N-J Act. In fact, this is stated in the goal. So, the question here is, why is something that is state-mandated a task that all teachers and administrators must complete to keep their job being used as a merit goal? The goals are stated, along with criteria for what will be considered complete, yet there are no clear directives for the exact role the superintendent will play in achieving those goals. I realize the impact of my words tonight, and I want to reiterate that I have respect for the process and the people involved. But I want to make it very clear that I have respect for the members of the ATA and my role as one of their officers. I thank you for taking the time to understand the importance of my advocating for them and consider the questions raised.
Thank you.
Good evening. Henry Goodhue, 16 Laurel Drive, as well as Hillsborough Education Association. Before I address my comments to the board tonight, I did have a clarifying question. Approximately a month ago, numerous members included me on communications that were sent to the board, addressing concerns to student and staff safety, as well as building concerns, mold, heat, et cetera. I, myself, sent a letter to the board explicitly addressing those things, and it was never listed as communication on the previous agenda or on this one. So, I do believe that there is multiple communications that need to be corrected related to student safety and building concerns.
We will look into that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. We'll put it on the record.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. For months now, I have stood at this podium and addressed the board on a variety of issues, whether it was negotiations, classroom temperatures, mold, the use of funding for activities of questionable value, student or student and staff, excuse me. All of these topics are tied to maintaining the quality of our schools. And for most of these addresses, I employed a quote or two to capture the sentiment of my concerns. Tonight, I will do the same. The quote is as follows. "While board members have the right to make public statements, such public statements must be made in the role of a citizen, not board members, to ensure there is no misunderstanding by the public about a member's personal opinion as a private citizen and the collective opinion of the board. The board member is required to make it clear in the statement that it was written in his or her role as a citizen and not written on behalf of the board." It continues. "To that end, the board member must identify his or her title as a board member and expressly indicate that the letter was neither authorized nor written on behalf of the board. This letter to the editor was written by one of the board members who did not follow these guidelines and may leave readers with a false impression of the board's opinion." End quote. These words were spoken by Mr. Kinst at the June 13th Board of Ed meeting, as he publicly admonished the actions taken by another member in the paper. Mr. Kinst was quick to point out that the actions of the board can be misinterpreted as representative of the entire board. I wonder, do these provisions regarding information given to a media source still apply? If a board member makes a comment on social media or to the media itself, must it still be representative of the entire board unless identified as otherwise? If that is the case, I wonder how many other members of the board feel, may feel about recent comments in an article published in the September 21st edition of the Hillsborough Beacon? Are the other members of the board comfortable with a possible breach of confidentiality and blatant disregard of the directives given by a state-appointed mediator? Do these actions represent the opinion of the entire board? Did they authorize the one-sided release of partial truths and inaccuracies? Or, as Mr. Kinst noted in June, could these actions have left readers with a false impression of the board's opinion? Every board member is elected to uphold a single mission, not to administer the schools, but to act alongside the other board members to ensure that they are run well. This mission statement is taken from the New Jersey School Boards Association Code of Ethics, a code that provides the framework for which a board member should operate and includes important provisions such as, "I will hold confidential all matters pertaining to the schools, which if disclosed would needlessly injure the individuals or the schools. In all other matters, I will provide accurate information and, in concert with my fellow board members, interpret to the staff the aspirations of, for the community, for its schools." Putting aside my role as an ATA officer and speaking purely as a parent and taxpayer, I find the recent I find the recent disregard of longstanding norms, confidentiality, and rules to be extremely disconcerting. Each of you have been elected to uphold the standards and principles of Hillsborough, to ensure that the district is run well and staff members are supported as they provide phenomenal educational experiences to Hillsborough's students. Granted, you are not in the schools, but that in no way absolves you of the responsibility to present a good role model for our students. Or, as Mr. Kinst recently said, to remain committed to students, staff, and community during negotiations. As a member of two of the three groups referenced in Mr. Kinst's quote, I am given pause. How has commitment been shown through recent actions? How does irrevocably damaging the trust required for successful negotiations support our community, let alone meet the demands of elected roles? As I reflect on the public admonishment of one board in June for an op-ed, I find it odd that another has been allowed to divulge confidential information, further complicating a delicate process and possibly squandering tax dollars, and yet similar words were not spoken tonight. Interestingly, the guidelines and rules outlined, the prohibition of such actions, were often wielded in an attempt to silence residents and staff members who voiced support or questioned the board as negotiations proceeded. Yet again, similar words have yet to be spoken. But ultimately, the negligent actions taken, their effects, and the lack of response are the board's alone, and will be a defining characteristic of your terms, just as the commitment of our members and the exceptional education provided to our students have become a defining characteristic of our schools. I have no doubt that in spite of recent actions, our members remain as committed to a fair contract as they do to our students. It is unfortunate that the board has allowed a representative to take such actions, to disregard the charge of an elected position, and add a level of unnecessary rancor and distrust to an already sensitive process. It is also unfortunate that the aforementioned actions in no way reflect the excellence, the excellence of our students, staff, and schools. Thank you.
Hi. Robin Davinson, 721 D Camp Drive. I too, um, sent an email to, um, Dr. Schiff and the Board of Education, um, when it talked about the heat issue. I've been teaching in this district for 31 years, and this continues to be an, a problem day in and day out. And now that it's getting cooler, people are beginning to forget. But I'm here to tell you, I'm not going to forget, because those days were absolutely challenging, both for the children and for the staff of this district, for, for our schools. You continually put Band-Aids on things that need to be fixed, permanently fixed. And what I'm asking the board today is to come up with a plan, some kind of plan that lets us know that by a certain temperature, you close the schools. It is absurd to think that we're going to put in a huge air conditioning unit in a gym and take my students out of their work that they're doing to play games, watch a movie, in another room, because, and that's, and we're going to call that education. We need to think long and hard about the health of our staff and the health of our students, because those days were so trying. I came home, as many of my colleagues said, with headaches, complaining, just feeling sick. And I know I speak to a lot of people who are here today. This cannot continue. You have, you have a job to do. There's other districts, surrounding districts, that have a plan in place, and they have, they have words in, in there that tell them when they have to close the schools. We, unless we're equitable around the district, then we close schools. If one, if one school doesn't have air conditioning, they all need to be closed until that, that happens. So please stop putting a Band-Aid on something that needs to be fixed. Make a plan and have it set, so we don't have this happen again. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Jessica Wolf. I'm a senior, and this is my second year in the peer mentor program at Hillsborough High School.
Hello, I'm Courtney Nissel. I'm also a senior at Hillsborough High School. I've been a part of peer mentoring for two years and peer plus for one year.
Hi, my name is Crystal Rodriguez. I'm also a senior at the Hillsborough High School, and I've been part of peer mentoring and peer plus for two years.
Hi, I'm Marissa Osowski, and I'm a junior, and this is my first year as a peer mentor.
Hi, I'm Hannah Hopson, and I'm a junior, and this is my first year of peer mentoring, and I haven't gotten to experience peer plus yet.
Hi, my name is Katie Myers, and I'm a Hills, and I'm a senior at Hillsborough High School, and I've been a part of peer mentoring for two years. I am here in support of the teachers and faculty of my school. As of last, as of this year, clubs that have previously run by volunteer faculty advisors have been put on hold, one of the clubs being peer plus. Peer plus stands for peers leading unique students and is a branch of peer mentoring. Peer plus takes place each month and involves the special ed students of HHS. This, this club calls for a lot of planning, and this hour, seven-hour school day is just not enough.
This club means much more to the special ed kids than one could imagine. Year after year, the excitement for peer plus grows, and this year is no different. Numerous kids have come up to me with excitement and questioning about the next peer plus day.
The disappointment on their faces when I have to tell them that I don't know if peer plus will be running this year is beyond heartbreaking. Peer plus is not the only club not up and running. Other clubs are also suffering. Without extracurricular clubs, our HHS student body is not as cohesive as it once has been. With that said, I ask that you, I ask that you not only keep peer plus, but all extracurricular clubs in mind when negotiating creating new regulations for Hillsborough teachers. Thank you.
Hi, Leisha Gabrielis. I live in Hillsborough, don't have a kid in the system yet, but I come to these meetings regardless. So I just, I think that last board meeting, you mentioned that it would cost millions to upgrade the AC properly. Did you also say what percent of the schools or the, um, the classrooms don't have proper AC?
It, it varies from school to school. So, our high school, um, has a good amount of their classrooms that are, well, all are AC, but we, we do have some problems in some classrooms, uh, getting cooling into those rooms, all the way down to, um, Sunnymead that, uh, has very few classrooms that have air conditioning there. And, and each school is, is different and unique.
So it might range from 10 to 40% per school or so?
Ranges from probably...
70?
You know, in, in large groups, we have, uh, we have libraries that are air conditioned, some off, you know, all of our offices are air conditioned. In this building, this room is air conditioned, um, but none of the classrooms on the first floor are air conditioned, so it could go from, say, maybe 10% up to 100%.
Okay. Yeah, I was thinking more just the classrooms. Okay. Also, just, um, different topic, but I've asked a couple of people, and I, I just don't remember, um, do you know what populations currently get full-day kindergarten here in this district?
We don't have a full-day kindergarten program.
So the special needs don't get it?
Some special.
There, there are some.
English language learning?
It's not a, it's not a general education, um, program. It's not for everyone.
But special needs would get it, right?
Some very small percentage of kids.
And some for English language learning?
I'm sorry?
Uh, English language learning, the people...
ESL.
Mm-hmm. We do have a full-day Title I program for, for ESL students, but we don't have a full-day program for all of our students.
Right. I understand that. Um, and then, so low-income also does, or does not?
No.
Not, not at all? And then also for the ones that are covered, is it a full day, or is it like two half-days? I'm just trying to understand what exactly we have here.
It's full day for those programs.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Seeing no more public comment at this time, I'm going to move on to the action agenda. Dr. Schiff?
Thank you. I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of education: to approve travel and related expenses, to affirm the, um, HIB determinations, uh, to approve an overnight trip as listed, and field trips, revise science curriculum, and approve the ASL textbook, as reported out of committee, to accept the education risk, insurance consortium safety grant of over $10,000, to approve an added district placement, the district calendar, and a variety of policies for first reading. Also, to abolish a, um, a particular policy, because it's being replaced by a new policy, and approve, um, regulations that are requiring, uh, board approval for first reading.
Thank you. So at this time, can I have a motion, motion to approve items 9.1 to 9.12 on the action agenda?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any questions or comments from the board?
Yes, I...
Yes, Mrs. Haas?
I need to separate out 9.8.
So what we're going to do is, we're going to approve items 9.1 to 9.7 and 9.9 to 9.12 at this time. Can I have a roll call, please, Mr. Bolden?
Absolutely. Ms. Bogeshevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Setfanti?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Dudda?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinst? Motion passes.
Thank you, sir. Can I have a motion to please approve item 9.8 on the action agenda?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? May I have a roll call, Mr. Bolden?
Absolutely. Ms. Bogeshevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Setfanti?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Dudda?
Yes.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinst? Motion passes.
Thank you. Dr. Schiff?
I ask for the following, um, that the board considers the following motions under the area of human resources: to approve resignations as listed, revise contracts, um, mentors, and revise mentors, um, revise transportation aids, revise lunch aid hours, revised science lab coverage, approve extra-science lab coverage, send contracts as listed, and approve, um, the, the contracts as listed, approve change in assignments and transfers, leaves of absences, and the appointments of guidance counselors, instructional assistants, substitute coaches, co-curricular advisors, intramural advisors, to approve student teachers, pre-approve extra-period coverage, to approve extra-period coverage, approve summer work, approve superintendent goals, approve policies for first reading, a whole bunch of them.
All right. Thank you, sir. May I have a motion to approve items 10.1 to 10.19 on the action agenda?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Second.
Do I have any discussion or issues to talk about right now? Uh, Mr. Bolden, I actually want to separate out item 10.13.
Okay.
Okay. Seeing no comments or questions, can we have, can I have a roll call to please approve items 10.1 to 10.12, and then 10.14 to 10.19 on the action agenda?
Absolutely. Ms. Bogeshevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Setfanti?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Dudda?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinst? Motion passes.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to please approve item 10.13 on the action agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Okay, can I have a roll call, please, Mr. Bolden?
Absolutely. Ms. Bogeshevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Setfanti?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Dudda?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
No.
Mr. Kinst? Motion passes.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Schiff?
I ask for the board's consideration of the following motions under the area of operations: to approve monthly bills lists, line item transfers, to approve the policies for first reading as listed, to accept the donations of a tenor saxophone from, from Kishar Rachapudi, and $60 donation to Sunnymead Elementary School from Admeet Giratar. Uh, and we appreciate both of those, um, donations. Approve transportation contracts as, as listed.
Thank you, and thank you very much for your donations. May I have a motion to please approve items 11.1 to 11.5 on the action agenda?
So moved.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Absolutely.
I'm, oh, I'm sorry. You know, I always do this to you, Mr. Gillette, I apologize. Mr. Gillette? Do you have any questions?
Because I spoke so much before, you don't want me anymore. Um, I just want to say something about, about the drones, just, just, just to be clear. No time was spent drafting this policy by anybody in, in Hillsborough. We, it was a recommended policy. We, board members, uh, receive it, read it at home on their own time, come in to a committee meeting, prepared to ask questions, clarify questions about it. We spend just a couple of minutes on it at most, and, uh, if it's a recommended policy and it, it looks good for the district, we, uh, we vote to put it through. That's all. We really spend no time at all. Just a quick...
Thank you, sir. Mr. Bolden, can I have a roll call to please approve 11.1 to 11.5 on the agenda?
Absolutely. Ms. Bogeshevsky?
Yes.
Ms. Setfanti?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Dudda?
Yes.
Mrs. Haas?
Yes.
Mrs. Haley?
Yes.
Mr. Kinst? Motion passes.
Thank you, sir. So I'm going to go to comments from the public right now on any old business. I see Mrs. Salinger running to the mic, so I'm going to hold off.
Hi, Amy Salinger, again, um, teacher at Otten Road School. I just wanted to thank Mrs. Bogeshevsky for visiting my classroom, um, during one of those very hot days. I, I, I do believe you all care about the heat and are trying to do everything you can. I know it's not an easy fix. Um, if at any time you want, any of you want to come visit my classroom on a very hot day, you are more than welcome, but I really did appreciate Mrs. Bogeshevsky coming, and, and really, the kids actually really appreciated it, because they were like, oh, maybe something will happen. So I, I appreciate your efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you, Mrs. Bogeshevsky.
Good evening. Henry Goodhue, Hillsborough Education Association, 16 Laurel Drive, as well. Typically, at the end of meetings is when we would do what was called the Heart of Hillsborough, where we'd share with you the various things that were going on around town, um, that our members were doing, that the board may not be aware of. And we would like to share a few things now, but as a little bit of a change, these are actually what community members have been doing, because truly, the heart of Hillsborough is the collective effort between the parents, the communities, the students, um, and our teachers. And over the last few weeks, few months, we've been getting very good use out of our blue shirts. Um, it's starting to become known around town, and two incidences, you know, that I would like to share with you, is we had a teacher walking into a local business, and there were gentlemen outside who actually knew what the back of the numbers were, and asked the teachers if they could see the back of them to say, oh, thank you so much for being a teacher for this long, we support you. It was very nice to have people stop and do that. And we also had another incident where a teacher was, was shopping in a local business for supplies for her own classroom.
Excuse us.
And another parent, who did not know who she was, was in the other aisle, saw the shirt, and said, I know you guys are going through tough times right now, I'd like to buy those supplies for your classroom. So, it's truly amazing, and it's, it's powerful for our members to hear this, and it's, it's wonderful to have the support of the community in such a great way, but it's so sad that they feel they need to come out to buy supplies for our classroom, or support us in getting a fair contract to work with their students. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goodhue. And as a board member, I am pretty responsible with anything I say on Facebook, for obvious reasons. Um, but I did actually see that posted on the community forum, and as the daughter of of a teacher for 30-plus years, I won't embarrass her, I absolutely understand your sentiment and where that was coming from. So, thank you very much. Yes, ma'am?
Hi. Lisa Picarello, 1108 Washington Common. My husband and I enjoyed our trip to back-to-school night and kindergarten orientation at HES recently, but I would like to note that at 7:00 PM, even at 7:00 PM, it was excruciatingly hot. And even though some children and some schools do have air conditioning, I don't like the idea of my son having to stay in the 90-degree building at HES, even though they have it. So, maybe the heat is something that should be looked into sooner rather than later. But just before I go, I wanted to let you know that I'm only here to find out more about the schools and how they're run, so if you do need parents and residents involved in any of those committees with business experience, we would be happy to do that, my husband and I. And...
My recommendation would be to send an email to the Board of Education. We all receive that, that you're interested in doing that, and public participation is always welcome when it comes to these things, and we thank you in advance.
Okay.